Yeah.
You have the white sign.
Yeah.
I can't hear you.
Okay.
Oh, it's on, he's got a.
Pull closer.
Yeah. I'm in front and I can't hear either.
Okay.
That's better.
Um, we should approve the agenda first.
Roll call.
Roll call, okay, um, roll call. Ken Spicer.
Here.
Frank here. And Dave is here.
Trevor's absent.
Trevor, yeah, I think Trevor has given up.
Why is Jennifer on here?
Jennifer is not allowed to be on. She's an employee. Yep. Yep. We should approve the agenda. If someone would like to make a motion.
Can you speak out?
Okay, let's go.
My closer, there you go.
Better? Any better?
Yes.
I'll be louder.
Pull closer even.
You do have a long voice.
Okay. Well, depending on what work.
And tip it up, you have to kind of tip it up to a point.
Pat on that, chief was working.
There you go. That better? Okay. Who's the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Ten moves. Frank seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all approved. Agenda. Now, the previous minutes. So I looked at the previous minutes and I thought, okay. If someone wants to make a motion that we approve Max twelve twenty-five.
Make a motion.
Okay.
All second.
Ten seconds it, all in favor? Right. Aye.
Ayes.
Then, okay. Hey, um, public comments and communications. For anything that's not journey to the well or the battery storage, so this is just general public comments. There will be time. Coming up very shortly for the, the journey to the well and the battery storage.
Sorry.
Yeah.
There is one in the. That's not for either of the applicants, so it's.
Yeah, you should, you should have a public comment in here. Where the public can talk about anything at this point.
Anything, okay.
Yeah. Just ask if anyone had, wants to make a public comment.
I can read mine since it didn't make its way into the package.
Okay, so it's a, just a general public comment?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So I'm Karen Brass. I appreciate the opportunity to speak out against any township supervisor appointing himself as ex-officio to the planning commission. This township has historically accepted MTA's interpretation of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And their caution against a supervisor's undue influence upon the planning commission. Her attached opinion number sixty-eight thirty-four from Attorney General Frank Kelly. His stated opinion is that, quote. A township supervisor may not appoint himself or herself as a member of the township planning commission. Unquote. To make matters worse, Supervisor Spicer further broke a tie by voting for himself. Again, I accept MTA's interpretation that voting for oneself may be considered to be a conundrum of injustice. Two citizens objected to this appointment during that March eighteen board meeting. Although in general council was present, I was not convinced that the rationale for self-vote would hold up if tested. And we've seen a further concern that decisions from this body are now more subject to legal challenge. I do not think it was just a coincidence that Planning and Zoning Council resigned right after this arguably improper appointment was made. My general opposition comes from the unbalanced concentration of power in any one individual. More specifically, I do not doubt Supervisor Spicer's knowledge of planning and zoning. But I do doubt that he is incentivized to foster free-thinking members rather than dictate his own agenda. So my plea to the rest of the planning commission members is that you do your own study. Seek advice from outside unbiased professionals. And avoid being led astray. We are counting on each of you to have the courage to stand up for the objectives of our citizens. Even if that conflicts with the same man that appointed you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a public comment, uh. I appoint members of the planning commission. The township board approves them. You report to the township board, not the supervisor. And you make your own decisions, don't make decisions that I, I do or that, they gotta be yourself, you need to represent. The community, not me or anyone else like me. But. You, I get to appoint you, whether the township board approves it or not is up to them, and that's why I'm allowed to sit up here. Is because I do not approve your appointment, they do.
Any other general comments?
In the packet, it was hard to read, um, whatever came in from David and Kelly Smith.
You have copies, sir. David, you got actually copied.
And this is what I came in with, it was looking like.
That one came out looking like. You got it, I'll take it right there.
It said, uh.
Frank and Kelly Smith. Do you have a shirt?
That was David Kelly Smith.
I have one. I don't know if this is, it was an email, it says, me and my wife and I do not support the Vesper. Is that the right one?
That's one.
Which is in here, which is in the packet again.
It was in the, it was in the packet, but I, I did, if you didn't have them, apple, you're.
Do you need this back?
No, you go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, from, from Dave and Kelly Smith. My wife and I. Do not support the Vesper Energy Proposed Energy Storage Facility in Columbia Township. We want our township to remain peaceful rural agricultural community. As with the township residents have stated repeatedly over the years. And that's it, from Dave and Kelly Smith. That was for the. That was not a general thing, that was for the, the battery storage.
Yeah, and we also have that in the battery storage that. Oh, there'll be one of the communications, let's talk to them.
Okay.
Then you have the other one there, those four pages, basically, they're very supportive of any renewable energy in the township anywhere. And, uh. Battery storage system, they believe is very safe and, uh. They had a real nice letter supporting it, it was nice and long, that was you. I appreciate it, I read that whole thing and it was, uh, very well-written and long.
Did a lot of research.
Did I sum it up though, you're very supportive of it, you have no problems with it and anywhere, right?
Yeah, really, not anywhere. I mean, we're in favor of their original site, we live right across the street from.
You're, you're on Fiftieth Street, yeah. Tonight, tonight, we're really not talking about Fiftieth Street, that is, already has a ordinance called a workable. Real ordinance, which is with the township board, and basically what we're doing tonight is other options. And then the township board is gonna have to decide what they wanna do with the options that we have before them. But your comment is, is in the record.
Yeah, no, my, our, our urgent comment involves the overlay district, not just the project.
Yes, you talked about the overlay district, we'll, we'll talk about why, sir.
So Tasha, do you have any comments on the two zoning ordinances? There are two zoning ordinances.
Are we in the public hearing now?
No, he hasn't ordered up the public hearing yet.
We're, yeah, we are in the public hearing.
What time did you start the public hearing?
Five minutes ago.
Done.
Really?
Just kind of happened, it just kind of happened.
Seven oh five. You, you need to. Identify any rules that you have for the, the evening.
The rules, I try to keep it to three minutes. I don't know, there's not, we've always been kind of lax here, so as long as things don't get out of hand.
I personally do not have anything, I have a press conference, so I, I do not have any comments.
You're on G four now.
Yeah.
Do.
Um. Would you folks, I have forgotten your name, would you folks like to read your statement or summarize it?
I think we'll summarize it.
Okay, it was a long statement.
Go to sleep in the middle of the meeting, um. Yeah, we're the D bolt, I'm Steve and this is my wife Mary, and directly across the street from where the battery system was originally proposed. Below, okay, we've known about it and the township has known about it for. Probably two years, I guess, this is not a surprise at any point. Um. We found out, just in this meeting was publicly announced about the proposed overlay district that would essentially eliminate any property in the township with the exception of the handling parcels on the. South west corner of the township, and, uh, we were a little surprised by that. I don't know a lot about zoning law, so just taking a guess, but as soon as they pass it ordinance, it says, these are the parcels that you can have an alternative energy site. Then all the rest of the property owners in the township are out. Forget about it, they're telling us how we can use our property and what. Alternative proposals, we might wanna get to the zoning board in the future, forget about it, there's an overlay district. Not so much that there's an overlay district, but how did the overlay district get picked? There are only two hundred and seventy-seven acres. Just for your information, two hundred and twenty-four and a half of those acres belong to the same company. Forty of them belong to consuming power, twenty of them belong to consuming power, only three, thirty-three of them are actually owned by other people, which is only three-quarters of an acre, which makes no sense at all. Anyway, my question, and I've written on here, but probably not necessary, is what was the criteria that was used to decide that your house. And your land is not suitable for alternative energy site, but that land over there in the corner by that bog is. It made no sense to me, I don't understand. The original site, where I thought was gonna be considered, but I, what Ben just said, I'm not sure what that. Township rule is, that, that prevents that.
There's two things, one. One is, you have the state of Michigan that is now allowed to permit.
Yes.
Anything in our township. In any location. And we have, like I said, a workable zoning ordinance, which covers that. Uh, right now, they're in the process of permitting. And we're probably going to go into negotiations with them. The township board has to decide that. On the other hand, uh, in the future, we would like to kind of keep it on a county road where we have other industrial and. And businesses, and we'd like to keep it close to the, uh, power lines, and that's why it was selected. The future, future use of our county roads, three eighty-eight is designated in the future for commercial and industrial. And that's part of the planning, uh, part of the master plan, and two fifteen was an alternate future for the same location. For the same reason.
Okay.
And that's how we got to that point.
Um, well, I don't know where else to make my comments, but essentially, I mean, three eighty is a half mile from the original. Those sites, so we're not that far off the mark. Um, I'm, I'm very disappointed in that whole thing, but I think in general. The opposition that I've heard and listened to for battery storage overall is not, not really well thought out. Um. If you think about this battery storage system, and we've done a lot of research on it, number one, it's a very low-impact facility. It makes very little noise, it puts out no emissions, it, it, it provides no burden to the township whatsoever after construction. The only burden is gonna be during construction, it produces millions of dollars in tax revenue for the schools, the state, the colony, and everybody. And basically, nobody's even gonna know it's there unless they drive down that street and look for it. It is not something that's gonna be a gigantic power plant. It's about a four and a half acre bigger.
Excuse me, unless it's right out your front window.
Yeah, yes, it would be right out of her front.
It'll be right out my front window, and they're.
Okay, okay, folks.
I know, I'm on, uh, two fifteen.
Folks.
I'm talking about.
Folks.
This thing.
Please, folks.
In the plan in two years.
Folks. One at a time, please.
So anyway.
You may continue with your.
Getting back to it, anybody who wants to can say not in my backyard, but I've already said, yes, okay, in my backyard, I'm for it. And I'm for it for a lot of reasons, number one, and I can't believe anybody is against this, better schools, better roads, more money for the township. We're talking about enough money to triple the township's general fund in about three or four years. I mean, there's a lot of money involved, and there's actually no burden, I, I mean, there's townships that fall over themselves and get something like this because nobody in the township even knows it's there.
We got your point.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other opposing? But. Excuse me, is there any, any, anybody else that's in favor of the battery storage? In favor?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure.
So. I can answer one question right off the bat, cause, um, my name's Nate Stafford and. My family is the company that owns the biggest chunk of that two hundred and seventy-seven acres. And my mom was a bodyist. Um. To answer your question. When I received these maps, I, I saw first draft of it, that was the first I had known that. My family farm, part of my family farm had been selected for this, there was absolutely no. Inquiry towards, to us before it was proposed, which I thought was very odd, and. Yeah, it, it was off-putting, I'm open to it, so that's the part that. I can't say I'm bothered by it, but, um, but I, I, I need to. The, the, the notice that came in the mail said that. The residents seek to remain a rural farming community, um. I agree with that statement, but I am curious. Who else in this room besides me makes their livelihood being one of these rural farms? Or working for one of them? Because I, I had a mentor tell me, before I came back to the family farm, he said. You better make sure this is what you wanna do. Because he told me, there are very few jobs out there where you're gonna have. About forty paychecks for your entire career. And some of those unfortunately are gonna be zero. Um, we, we have weathered growing blueberries and having a grain operation, we have weathered some very tough times over the past ten years. And that's, that's nothing special, that's the name of the game. But this opportunity with these projects allows your farmers, your community farmers to remain local. Uh, unfortunately, we had to shut down our grain operation, this, this past harvest was our last harvest. Because it wasn't viable anymore. We couldn't maintain that part of the operation. We had to let a couple people go. Your neighbors, people that live in this township, have to find other work now. And we thankfully were able to lease out all of our, our land. But not a single one of those new tenants are in this township. Because they have to be big enough and, and structured in a way. That makes it profitable, and, and you're going counties away. To have operations that can handle that. Opportunities like this don't come on, come along very often, and these facilities, both, both the Vesper facilities specifically, but solar. Uh, projects themselves too, offer an opportunity where I can take what was forty or now thirty paychecks. And actually have reliable stability. That doesn't come from the blueberries that come off the bushes, because those frankly can't be relied on every, every single year, unfortunately. So. Going back to one of the points you made, ultimately, farming is managing a business, an operation. And mark managing land. And what I see the township doing here is telling a farmer how to manage his land. In a room where nobody raised their hand. To say they understand what it's like for me to say, this is, this was our choice. We went into it with our. You know, our heads, head on screwed on straight, trying to find. A, an appropriate way to operate our business. And this is one of the paths we chose. So while we are not directly involved with Vesper, I will say that. They have reached out to us and asked, and we're trying, we're seeing if there's an option to. They are doing everything they can to make this work, including considering other sites. So I think it would behoove the township to recognize that they have a good partner trying to make things work. And, um, and unfortunately, I, I hate the words coming out of my mouth. I never thought I'd say, I. I'm sorry to say that I trust the people in Lansing to do the right thing more than my local leadership. Um, but ultimately, that's kind of what it feels like right now.
Okay, I can't get his name, pardon, I can't get his name. Well, um, just state your name again, please.
Nate Stafford.
Nate Stafford.
The company is Corner Stone Egg.
Okay.
Joe Stafford, your father?
Yes.
I worked with him for about, uh, ten years at Palisades.
Finally go.
Long time ago. Pam was there too.
Yeah, yeah.
She lives over there.
Okay, any other pro battery storage? Hey, then we will slide into the con battery storage, anybody that's opposed?
What if we have questions that are neutral? Can we add questions?
Sure. Yep, we'll let this gentleman go first.
My name's Jason Bryant, uh, I live right across the street from the proposed overlay district and the current proposed site for the battery storage. Um, I'm concerned about, you know, the environmental impact. Uh, I know it's good tillable farmland there, and there's already been a lot of good tillable farmland in Michigan that's been. Develop, um, developed over the top of, and we're just losing farmland. I know, um, he made some good points for, on the business aspect, which I can respect. The other thing too is wildlife patterns, uh, it could potentially negatively impact wildlife patterns. I own eleven acres and I got seven of its wood, and I hunt in my backwoods, and I've got all kinds of deer going through the area. Deer's very tasty. I believe the Black River is also a protected stream through that area, if I remember right, that overlay district floods up against the, uh, Black River. Also, I am an amateur radio operator, and the equipment for the inverters and everything else associated with. Battery storage and solar. It can negatively impact my radio equipment. It'll make it to where I will not be able to use my radio equipment at home, and. Um, if you take a look at what happened up north in northern Michigan, people had no way to communicate at all. Because phone, landline phone lines weren't down with the power lines, uh, their internet went out, cell phone went out. Look at what happened in, uh, North Carolina. The only way to get out, to get any word out was with amateur radio. I can power my equipment with batteries, so if we lose power, I can still get a message out, and I told, uh, Heidi over there that. I've got software on my laptop that I can use, hook my laptop up to my radio and send a message out to. You know, yourname@gmail.com essentially, and be able to get, you know, message out over RF. I've also talked to other people, um, in another state, and they have said that the, uh. Battery equipment not only makes it impossible for them to talk. Long distance. Certain times, it makes it impossible for them to be able to talk locally because of the radio frequency interference of the, uh, solar equipment in their area. And, um, another thing I'm concerned about is, my house is like right, real close to the road. And I saw that, you know, there's supposed to be a period of light in there on the, um. On the facility. And that could wind up coming into my, you know, coming into my bedroom window, I'm trying to sleep at night. That's something I'm. Very concerned about, you know, being able to get a good night's sleep without having all that bright light coming in.
Okay.
Also, if, if this does go forward and the site does go there. I, I would like the equipment to be tested for radio equipment, inter, for radio frequency interference. Prior to being installed and periodically after it's been installed, if we go, if this goes forward. To make sure that I can still use my amateur radio equipment, which can be vital in an emergency situation. Should all other, especially when all other forms of communication were to fail, like, you know, internet and cell phones and my mic and stuff like that.
So you're by the one on two fifteen or the one on?
The one on two fifteen.
The one on two fifteen, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I don't know where the, uh, original, what, the Fiftieth Street?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't know exactly where that's at, I don't know how far away it is, but. I think that should be enough distance away from my, uh, side out to where they don't think it'll affect me.
Okay.
So. The, uh, transmission lines are half a mile from my house, I mentioned transmission lines are half a mile from my house, and. Even those can cause interference, but I'm part enough away to where it's not gonna call it interference, with it being that far away.
Okay.
But with it, across the street, there is a likelihood that if they use. If they use cheap equipment and they don't maintain the equipment, it will make my radio equipment unusable.
Okay. Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Erin, did you want to go next?
Sure. Um, I'm generally in favor of the concept of an overlay district. And I may have asked this at a board meeting, but we've got different people here, Ken, did you personally select the overlay district?
Personally, not, uh, actually, we were, a group of us, Dixie was there, I think, uh. I think the treasurer was sitting there when we were trying to look at, uh, what options we have. And I think what we got to looking at is Consumers Energy had a parcel of property there where they can put a substation in. It met the county road, because we were looking at the master plan, and then it, uh, met the industrial part, because there's a lot of, uh, people on that road that already have. Either industrial, commercial, uh, operation. And basically, the master plan, looking for a county road and to put it on. Now, I understand that Vesper is willing to, uh, fix. Twenty-fourth Avenue, one of the things that they said that they would fix after they got their construction done, which is a positive thing. But I don't think the board has made a decision which way we're going yet.
Right, right. So my understanding for tonight is we're really concentrating on the whole overlay district.
We're concentrating on the overlay district today, the battery and solar panels.
Okay. And so, Mr. Stafford, I think, made an excellent point, and it was one of my questions, is when this overlay district was established? So at that point, the property owners were not contacted to have any input on?
No, the, the notices were sent out to them, they were hoping that they'd come in and talked about it, and, uh. If they don't. if they don't want a solar panel in the overlay district, they don't have to sell their property, nothing's forcing them to sell their property.
Well.
Did they get a notification?
Was this, and this meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there was no invitation for comment other than this.
You, you were informed of the meeting, right? The public hearing? You're told when it was?
I know, I got the impression that you were saying I had an opportunity to make comment before this.
We, we told you in that letter that the, the records are on file at the township hall to look at, right? Wasn't it in the letter?
I think he and I are on the same page and you are not. What I'm asking is when you childrens, you and Dixie and the treasurer, this, this plan for this overlay district has probably been available a month. Anyway.
There was first mention when you had all the, the two attorneys meet with the planning commission. And that's where the homie, homie air mentioned it.
Established this and started moving forward with the overlay. At that point, the owners of the property within the overlay district, you or nobody at the township contacted those property owners, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I think that was the point. So now, tonight is their first opportunity to be brought in, okay? Um, meanwhile, you personally as supervisor are negotiating with Vesper for the original property and the work of ordinance, correct?
That is incorrect at this time, there is communication between them. They wanna meet with us to negotiate. And we're gonna have to discuss that at a township board meeting to go forward with that.
Okay.
And that's on the agenda for next week, I think.
For negotiations with Vesper?
To talk about it with the township board meeting.
Like a good point on the picture that the, the original site, at this time, there are no objections, like any of property owners suffering with the power lines. Uh, to this project that wherever is the original plan and that farmland is played out, we cannot. And when somebody tried to go corner, I'm like, well, the blueberries are barely making it. And, and they're raised off the motivation of this thing, there are only a few homes there and we're fine with this thing. You know what I mean? So I'm just pointing this out.
Yes, you know, we're, we're, we're talking, we're, we're talking about things that are outside of what we're here for. You, you wanna get into the details, the attorneys recommended that we do an overlay district. Our attorneys recommended that we find the location that matches with our master plan and where they thought that it'd be close to the power lines and get us onto the county road. We sat down and developed that for them, then we sent it to them and they wrote the ordinances. And then they sent them back to the township board to review and from the township board, they sent it to the planning commission and asked the planning commission, the whole public hearings. And that's how we got here.
So are there any criteria or findings or studies that, other than location by area of view to explain why that man was chosen?
It's been walked.
I'm sorry?
It's been walked. We walked the power lines.
It's been walked.
Walked. It's been walked?
I mean, you walk. It's not very.
I walked down the power line.
Okay.
So the, the.
I just walked, I just walked.
Folks, just in. So the, the property on Fiftieth Street, there are no studies about that either, it was just picked kind of.
By the developer.
Oh, they are now, yeah, yeah, but at the time they were just.
I'm just saying, overall for the township, because an overlay district is township wide, it affects every property in the house.
No, the overlay district just.
No, that's what I mean, but I'm saying if you're not included, then you're excluded.
So, a- a- again, you're, 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 there, there's more than one thing going on here. The state of Michigan right now can put a battery storage facility anywhere in this township they want. Okay, Vesper is working with Fiftieth Street to do that. Okay, then there's attorneys wanting an overlay district. And then we're working on trying to accomplish that now. We are not at the point of saying, this is a done deal, we make a recommendation to the township board and they have the final say.
And my only point was if the original site were in the overlay district, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Exactly.
Can I ask a question? So you say, what's the name of the company you developed that wanna do this that, you know, Corner Stone, they offered, what's the name of that company?
Vesper.
Vesper, okay, Vesper, so who is Lee Wood, the developer company? That offered to come, I own two fifteen, cause I live on two fifteen, two, two, six oh one, kinda row two fifteen. I brought up to the power line. And they, they talking about putting a building with a washroom, bathroom and everything, so who is that?
That's a good question.
I don't know who that is.
They offered, they offered fifty dollars an acre to need your land when they first start, then after they clean it, they offering a hundred dollars, then after they put up some, they offering five hundred and then after they you get it operating, they offering you a thousand dollars and twenty dollars, twenty percent of the profit of that, so who is that that's offering that?
I can speak to that, but that might be taken as solid.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything like that.
This letter that you got?
And they sent a card.
Lee Wood is another developer that's looking at doing a solar farm.
Need some delight?
Yes, need some land. Uh, we, we have contractors, we have contracts with them for some of our land. And they've been canvassing the area looking to add to that, yeah, so that, that's why there, we received some kind of inquiry, like, um, that's from my understanding, not nearly as far along as Vesper. Because Vesper just got into it earlier. And, and even the permitting side, I don't understand all of this, so I can't tell you exactly why, I, I don't know. But they're simply another developer.
So you're talking solar panels, yes, gentlemen. And Vesper for the battery. Now, you got both too?
Correct. Correct, I'm sorry, I'm.
I'm sorry, okay. They, they had both, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the solar panels and the batteries, if I'm not mistaken, I had asked about the car there.
Well, I, I wouldn't be surprised if they do both. But I believe our contract is strictly solar panels. It, it isn't a battery facility like the Vesper proposals.
Okay, so, anybody else have?
We have, probably more questions than anything.
Okay.
So like this fall in front of me, the first I'm hearing of any of this is the letter that I received, probably he could go in the mail saying that there was this meeting. Um, I have a lot of questions because I'm not first on solar energy. I work at a nuclear power plant, I don't know anything about solar, okay? I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to it, but I have a lot of questions and concerns, like uh, Jason stated, nature, uh, there's a blue herring heresy that's on the backside of that boxy property back there. Um, I don't wanna look at it out of my window, I don't want the shine from the solar panels, I don't want high lighting everywhere. I don't want construction going on all hours where I can't sleep when I gotta get up at four o'clock in the morning, go to work. Um, is there health hazards associated with it? You know, I just have a lot of questions about it. Uh, and I moved to the country so I could enjoy nature and the views and the woods and the animals and if a solar field comes in right across my big picture window, that's what I'm gonna get to look at. No deer, no blue herring, no sand cranes, uh, wild turkeys. I understand that farming is a hard job. And if you're not a huge farmer, you're probably struggling and I get it. And, you know, there's something else you can do to your property, I'm willing to get your point of view. The other thing is, what's that gonna do to my property value? I've spent years in my house, for now. Um, fixing it up, making it nice. Is my property value gonna go down? Like when I go wanna sell this, when I go retire here pretty soon? Uh, who's gonna wanna buy a piece of property that? That's what you get to look at, I mean, there are reasons I didn't live in the city or near the city or near an area that was likely to be developed. Um, so I just have some concerns and I want you guys to take all those things into consideration. Um, like I said, I don't know the studies on that, how noisy is it, am I gonna hear a constant humming when I'm trying to sit outside and enjoy nature?
Good. Um, thank you, what was your name again?
Heidi Wallenke, I live on the county road two fifteen.
Um, any other comments opposed? Sure.
Um, Something that was said earlier about all the revenues that may come from this and it is possible that substantial revenues will come. But we also know Vesper was very upfront about the fact that they would apply for tax exemptions. So some of those revenues may not actually happen. And I believe Vesper wants to hold down might answer a lot of people's questions.
You know, too, already.
They, they may have another.
On any of them.
No. I think for the first thing I've heard about this.
So what is the best way to get notification out if it's like township wide? I think there was something in the reminder and I don't know if everybody looks the reminder. If it's an open house by Vesper, they probably don't have a legal obligation to do a search. But I would think the township would want to make sure people know about it.
On that note, I have a question, how come not all the township residents receive this letter? Why is it just people?
Right there involved, right on across from the property or?
It was supposed to be within three hundred feet?
The procedure requires three hundred feet from the boundary of the properties that would be in the overlay district.
My other neighbor right there, she's three hundred feet and didn't get it.
Shouldn't be, she might be in the.
Are you on the other side, are you south of the power lines?
Being hard with the township?
No, she's in Columbia Township, it goes right to the corner.
But she did, but she is south of the power line.
Right across from that.
Power, power lines are here and she is right there, right here.
Power lines are three hundred and forty feet from one side to the other. So anything on the other side of the power lines was outside the three hundred feet.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, um, as far as the, as far as the tax money is concerned?
Yemen order.
Okay, okay, folks, folks. Um, just, just my little bit of knowledge, as far as the tax money is concerned, that money goes to the county and then the county spreads it around. But we don't get that tax money, we get tax money based on population. Am I wrong?
We're mistaken.
We get one percent. And then we get another, what is it? Forty seven thousand?
You're talking about what we get through the state.
State of Michigan, yeah.
We get general operating, we get roads.
Special assessment districts.
Yeah, we get things locally here that are based on the taxes that stay here.
Hmm, but, but we don't get that twenty four million, we got what, one percent of it? We got a small fraction.
Karen's talking about the special assessment district, which brings in seven point two five mils, picks up fire, police, uh, senior services, general operating and fire.
And roads, did you say?
And roads. So they do, they do pay taxes on that and that does bring in revenue for those, those items. Our major revenue is, uh, state of Michigan's, uh, revenue sharing, which, uh, is based on population.
Okay, so let's get back to the public comments, anybody else opposed?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You said you walked the properties? You?
Walked the power lines.
Just the power line?
I did not go on anyone's property.
I, I've walked just on my side of the power lines and you cannot get an understanding of what that ground is by walking the power lines.
What?
And how much of it is parts and it's not, there's blueberries way back there too, but you don't walk in the power line.
I saw those on the map.
Point is, out of two hundred and seventy seven acres, walking the power lines, you maybe see five.
Can I just, just be a little wrong with the question?
Sure.
Um, with, with the original site on Fiftieth Street, that was abandoned by who and now we're looking at a site on two fifteen. Why, why, and, and this owner lives there and he wants to, he, he, he's in favor of adding the facility there on Fiftieth Street. What, why are we not looking at Fiftieth Street now?
They are going ahead with the Fiftieth Street one.
I, I, I don't, I mentioned this once before, we, we have what's called a, uh, workable payroll ordinance, which covers Fiftieth Street. We also have the state of Michigan permitting that covers Fiftieth Street. They could go do a permit to the state of Michigan and they've already got it laid out to do it at Fiftieth Street. A work, a workable ordinance through the township gives us some leverage to get some tax money and some benefit for it, we're gonna be negotiating with Vesper about that if the township board approves going in that direction. They had a meeting with, uh, the attorneys with the planning commission and you had one attorney going for Fiftieth Street, you had another attorney, our township attorney, going for a overlay district and trying to get it set where it should be best suited for the township.
Oh, it's put to align with the man.
So what we're doing right now is we're trying to get both ordinances tonight approved to be able to go and take the other ordinance and then have the township to board decide the direction of the township.
So it's gonna, um, are both projects going ahead possibly, or is it gonna be one or the other?
We don't know, we're, we're taking public comment to see what people wanna do and we're gonna have to evaluate that based on the information that we received tonight.
There isn't a project going into overlay. That's just where they would like future projects to go, there's not a project.
And that's separate from Fiftieth Street, which is moving ahead on the.
Correct, okay.
The overlay is just where in the future they would like the projects to be, but there are no projects planned. No implications, no.
Thank you, Tasha, that was very, very well put. I was struggling with that one.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah, cause at this point, according to the state, they can go anywhere. So if we have an overlay district, then that will be where they can go.
Okay, so we're trying to, the township's trying to get ahead of the state before the state goes and decides, we're trying to say.
We're too late.
They're already behind the stage.
We're already late. Last November, we had to have a ordinance in place, we didn't make it.
Oh.
So now we're trying to do recovery and try to figure out the best thing to do for the township, based on public comment.
I do think it's important to note that the overlay district is only functional if Foster Swift wins the lawsuit.
Correct.
Correct.
I do have one question on that overlay district. Um, is that just for commercial industrial power, you know, like?
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy, so?
Batteries, solar, I don't think.
Somebody, let's say, any one of us here, we decide we wanna put, and set some point in the future, if the overlay district's approved, that won't affect us from wanting to put solar panels on a roof, let's say?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anybody else? There's no more comments, I'm going to close the the battery storage portion of the of the meeting and we're going to move on to the, to the journey to the well. And is it journey to the well or journey of the well?
Seven fifteen.
To the well, oh, the time is, yeah, seven fifteen. Journey to the well, okay. You have a journey to the well person?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to give us an overview? Get his name.
Yeah, so we have a.
Could you give us your name first?
Scott Beck. We have an existing building that, um, a year ago, we had, uh, special land use permit to store boats. And we're applying for a special land use uh, in the same building for, to build out a, it's a welcome. Basically, it's partitioning off a twenty foot by sixty foot area of that building. It's basically a pole barn. Created welcome center, uh, it would include a restroom.
That's it. So, um, you've already got a special use permit for um, refresh my.
The seasonal storage.
For seasonal storage.
Other specialty, you have two specialties. For the, the lodge, also this, your civic, uh, fraternal lodge.
Social organization.
Social organization, there you go.
Which is a, very five oh one C three.
Okay.
Yeah, this particular building is, it's zoned ag, but it's zoned for commercial use of the building. Which you shared with me, Tasha.
The storage building is not, the lodge is.
Uh, storage building is.
Storage building is not commercial. Storage building has a special use to store your boats.
Yeah, okay, well, that's what you told me.
So Tash, would you like to give us the overview from the?
Yeah, so he has the special use for the civic organization. And then the welcome center is for the civic organization for the groups that are coming to stay at the houses. What he has is needing for the, for them is stated that there would be groups of people, church groups, or whatever, staying in the homes, and then they would then use the lodge as part of that for their meetings or whatever. So this area for the, for the civic organization, and they wanted to put it in the building that they stored boats.
So the I don't know if it matters or not, but the, the special use for the boats, it's that's not it. That's not material to us. In other words, if we couldn't have both uses, we would give up the boat storage if we could only have the, the use for the, the welcome center. If, if, if that's a conflict, if, if it doesn't matter, then that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So then in the ordinance, a special use is required an accessory or for an accessory building structure being used customarily to incidental uses stated above. So the special use is for the use of the welcome area office for the civic organization. And then they chose to put it in the building that they have another special use for, for the seasonal storage.
So I'm confused.
That all being used not for profit? Is there any for profit also being used for that area?
So the, uh, the the homes are, are rented out. And with, with that includes kind of all the amenities of the property. So they get to, uh, utilize the lodge and, uh, access the lake, that type of thing.
So there's an intermix in between the for-profit and not-for-profit?
Um, the we're allowed, so the parcel of grand the, the building that we have, the special land use for the social organization, is the lodge building. The other parcels are simply on, they're, they're different parcels, homes that were rented.
They're, they're not on the same parcel as the, the lodge or the.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So they're not, so they're, they're rentals just because they're home?
Yes.
And they're on separate lots?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're like store two rentals?
I'm sorry, the storage building is on the same parcel of the lodge.
Correct.
And then there's another storage building that's on the other parcel, which is also part of the special use for the seasonal storage.
That's on lot thirty one then, instead of on eleven, right?
Just on the other, the larger parcel.
No, that larger parcel's not for profit also?
That would be, yeah, there's a house on that one.
So we, we don't need the special land use for that separate building on, that has the, uh, cap on it also. We, we don't need that. We, in fact, we didn't use it. We're, we're only, we only utilize, uh, the building that we're talking about. We got one boat, so it's, it's immaterial. Um, so we can, we can forego the, the boat storage on any parcel. It doesn't matter. Uh, what we're requesting is the, the special land use on this, in this accessory building. The parcel that has the fraternal organization.
And how many people do you think maximum would be in that building at one time?
Uh, I believe in the previous proposal, we, we mentioned a number of like sixty to seventy, I believe. Would, would be potential.
Is, is it a social organization?
What we have, we have, yes, we've organized Journey to the Well under a foundation called Journey to the Well Foundation. Uh, this is a, a, uh, incorporated not-for-profit entity that is also a five oh one C three. We have the five oh one C three status.
Are there memberships of the social organization?
Those that come to and utilize the facility are the members.
So the general public doesn't go there?
General public does not go there.
Tasha, did you have something?
No, I think I, I just, I was gonna kind of read what his initial application said for for the lodge in case there were questions, but I think they're, I think they're getting answers. I was just looking for the.
Is there something we're overlooking?
I I'm, I'm not sure. That's why I kind of sent it here. Um, it would be an accessory use. Or, cause the lodge is already the main use, so having an office or this additional area is accessory to that, so it's not another use, it's an accessory use. Just, um, not sure how it works with the seasonal storage building and then the lodge and that. But if you could take away the seasonal storage in the building, then we wouldn't have two special uses on one property for two different uses. That's kind of mildly concerned, but I wasn't really sure how you.
I don't know, it's, we kind of are a jumble.
Wouldn't it be helpful, like I said, if we recognize that, uh, we don't need the special use for the seasonal storage?
Yeah, we'll put that down as like optional, yeah.
Or it could be attached to the lodge or inside of the lodge. Kind of makes more sense, I guess, if it's, yes. Or then does that use then still follow the five oh one three C for the civic? That's, yeah, that's gonna.
It would be an accessory use.
The accessory use to the.
Organization, as people come, um, they're checking in to the welcome center. Having a bathroom facility for them to utilize initially. And, uh, you know, there's, if it's a church group or a business group, they would be getting their welcome packet. Um, and then there, they would, uh, be shown to their log cabin, the, the homes that they'd be staying at.
Do you need to have an, uh, exit door towards the back of that so that people don't get trapped in there?
No, oh, I'm sorry, I don't.
Not required?
At seventy five feet. That, that's only sixty feet long. You need one every seventy five feet.
What is it? How many is it?
Sixteen, twenty by sixteen?
Can you get out a window?
Break the window.
Just if I was under an fire, I would break it.
Well, there's windows, yeah, all along the side. But I bet's not more than seventy five feet, they would only need the one exit. But if it does need to, then the building official would tell them they need to. There's no need to build it for them for this.
Our builders working with the architect to get, to get stamped and approved. Architectural drawings that they submit to the the, um, these are low vague. Let me, let me read the text or the message you sent me. He, he has an architect working on the plans to convince stamp sealed as required by the building department in Columbia Township. Once he has them, he will turn them into the building department to be added to the permit application that's already submitted.
And that's how the whole thing started was I got the application.
Okay, um, are there any questions or comments? For our con, from the, the public? Sure.
I have a question from back when you applied originally and talked about that different church groups could come in and use the facility. But today you said something about the only people using the facility are members of some organization. So now I'm confused about how you're set up, and are you open to other church groups in the area coming in or?
Yeah, we established the, the five oh one C three, the foundation as a social organization that people who come and utilize the facility are, are really part of that organization. And so, um, it doesn't matter, you know, the church, you don't have to, you know, it could be a different church church that be part of, and business groups that come and utilize the facility. Um, my wife is used up there to share kind of the vision behind what we're doing. And my daughter, they're also, we're just sharing what we're doing in that space to create place for people to, like, build relationships with, with God, with the Holy Spirit, or you hope to have marriage retreats at some point.
So this is all on that three point one acre parcel?
Yes.
Is it? Anybody else have comments? Well, if there's, thank you. If there's no other comments, I'm gonna close that portion of the meeting that eight oh five. And we're going to get back to the.
Have a question.
Sure.
Is there, uh, is there a, is there a response from? Or, how, how, what's the next step? You guys have to.
Yeah, we will discuss this.
We're gonna discuss it, then, uh, first, we're, we're gonna work on the ordinance, take care of that, the ordinance things. Decide what we're gonna do with that, then we will decide what we're gonna do with the journey to the well.
Yeah.
Decide what you're gonna do with the ordinance, meaning.
The battery storage.
We, we have to go through, look at our, all our comments and then make a decision.
Okay, yeah, got it.
You're back to the regular meeting?
Yes.
And that's also at eight oh five, right?
Yes. Okay, so as far as the re- renewable energy thing.
Yeah, renew- renewable energy. We're, we probably ought to take our, uh, make a list of the comments that we got. The other stuff that we know from our attorneys and, and that add to the, that list. And then from that list, try to determine what's important and where we go from there. So.
Um, as far as the public comments, it sounds like it's pretty much split.
Well, we need to write down what the comments are. Right? I had someone concerned about wildlife.
Makes sound.
Yeah, sounds.
Big time, but.
They, they use the word battery noise, radio interference.
Well, my understanding is that the battery storage is not quiet. They all have heating and cooling units in them, and they, and they hum and they howl. And they whistle, cause there's big inverters in them.
Depend on load.
Yeah.
We, we also have positive. Oh, for Fiftieth Street. Which really isn't on our list, so that probably don't need to be taken care of. Um, property values. Property values lower. Want to remain a rural farming community. View. Do not see total town. Or renewable energy. Did I get it right? I miss anything?
You sure didn't go into any detail about the positives.
About what?
Oh, he hasn't done the.
He does yet, okay.
You haven't done the positive.
I haven't hit the positives yet, no. I said a positive for fifty three. What do you guys got for positive? I got environmental on the other one too.
Please, please tax money, there's people should be able to do what they want with their property. That's a big one.
Finance, does that pick up anything? Financial benefit, would that be a?
Sounds like one, one property's farmable or the other one isn't, right?
So?
The one property's farmable, the other one isn't.
Well, the that district can be expanded if necessary. After you use financial benefit, uh, recommended by attorneys. By township attorney. That provides township options. Anything else?
I guess the the big looming, the big looming overriding fact is that the. State of Michigan is in charge, but right now. And according to them, they can do anything they want, pretty much anywhere they want. By making this overlay district, it will at least confine it to one small area.
That's revenue. Listen, anything? Got everything? Karen, I missed anything?
More loud enough, but that's okay. I'm I'm just sort of amazed at the process. But I did hear Dave say people should be able to do what they want with their property. Glad you said that.
That might not be my opinion, but that that's some people's opinion.
Oh, that clarifies, thank you.
I am very much in favor of some people, that's why I'm up here.
So we've got the uh the list. Uh, let's see, we need to generate the list. So we have both negative and positive. I would say that all of them are actually factual. They're not. Disagreeable. The master plan. That's where County Roads.
So we do have a master plan. And it's pretty clear on the master plan that. The people want to keep this a very rural farming agricultural community.
Master plan also says future use for industrial and that County Roads. It also. Master plan also has a statement about uh. Industrial and uh. Really and uh. Commercial. On County Road. With County Road three eighty-eight being the most important. And two fifteen, the backup. They care of the master plan that I know. Next one is all the. Uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. Farming is actually a commercial. Business. However, it's ag is restricted to farming. So I'm not sure that buys us anything.
So are we going to have to make a decision on this tonight?
We should.
Yes. You can make you, your decision could be just postpone your decision if you need to have more information. Or you'll just make the decision and send it to the board. But either way, there should be their decision to postpone, to have more information and come at the next meeting. Or yes.
So we've been circling on this for over a year. And we've gone from one point to another point to another point and. We've had the lawyers here, they give us opposing. Opposing views. And the rules seem to keep changing. And there are lawsuits in in place and there's. Legislation in place. So nothing is really fixed, so we're trying to make a. Make a stab at a moving target. And all the time not really step on on anybody's toes.
Public service is an affected recommendation. To the township board to approve, prove a condition or disapprove or. You said it, I can't remember.
What did I say?
Well, it'd be nice if I could remember. So we're at the the point of making a recommendation what to do with, and did we decide that we're going to?
Did you actually read out loud number three?
I thought I did, didn't I? Three is uh any public service facility that will be significantly adverse to impact in development or allow under the requested rezoning. Public services, compat- right? And I I said that there's really. The public service is not affected, that P A thirty-three would. Two thirty-three would allow allow this to happen. Did I did?
Yeah.
Send it to yourself, reading out, reading it.
I might have been listening to him talk about the other stuff at the same time.
We may have skipped it because it doesn't really apply because we don't have any public services.
Okay, we're at the point of a recommendation. And this would be for the uh. Battery and overlay district. Ordinance.
We're trying to restrict uh restrict the size of that this, correct? Is one of the main reasons to not have a. A huge megawatt, right?
Yeah, one of one of uh another thing that the that it's trying to do is to uh. Needs of the township. The power needs of the township, probably a better way to say it. Which we need ten megawatts and the minimum that we can uh approve would be fifty up to two hundred megawatts.
So.
And the state's going to do that anyways.
They're right, yeah, they would put two hundred in, yeah, at least two hundred, yeah. So a megawatt is. One of those big shipping containers full of batteries is a megawatt, roughly speaking. So you two hundred megawatts and then you have two hundred shipping containers.
Well, we need a motion to do something at this point.
We do, yes.
You heard everything, we've documented everything, we discussed everything.
Yeah, and we we have been circling on this for a year.
I haven't been here that long.
Yeah, yeah, I've been here that.
Well, it's time to do something.
Yeah. I make a motion that we. Approve the battery storage overlay area. Whatever that was.
They've uh made a motion. Through the uh overlay district. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh oh one. Approved to send to the township board.
We doing both at the same time?
Yeah, do both at the same time, they're both separate.
Okay.
They made a motion.
Second it.
Frank seconded.
Roll call vote. Um, Ken?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Dave, yes. So next I make a motion, we approve of the. The solar.
We have to go through the list again with the solar.
What's that?
Are you gonna go through the list again with the solar or you kind of did?
Are we seeing the same list applies to both? So we're gonna have the same list of items. So you you're doing, it's only an ordinance uh twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two?
Yeah.
And you made a motion again?
I made the motion, yeah.
They made the motion.
Second it.
Frank seconded.
Okay, all in favor, roll call vote. Ken?
Yes.
Frank, yes. Dave, yes. So. So next we can go back to Journey to the Well. And. I'm still confused whether it's a. It seems like a for-profit organization. I don't know. All your houses, are they short-term rentals or long-term?
Short-term.
They're short-term rentals. Do you have, you have some comments?
Can you explain anymore as to how it's not profit? I think they're. Is it all right if he explains a little more?
The lodge for the for gathering place. Okay, it's in an agricultural district. We are charging houses because we're allowed to do that. As we rent the houses for groups. They get access to. The social organization space. Where they gather and meet, they have their meetings and. Uh, they use the property.
Uh, Scott, Scott, explain to me, explain to me, you want to go first?
Well, I was just gonna say, so then. They're not charged for the lodge, they're charged to stay and then as part of that, I think that's.
Right. But but that's, I mean, what we're here for. We we've been approved on that. What we're here for is to seek approval. First, uh specially accessory use. Of this building that's on the same property. That we want to. Use as a welcome center for the people coming in. These several, we want to have a restroom so they can utilize a restroom. That's the, that's the simplicity of it.
The the people coming in are actually running the the cottages around the lodge then?
Yes, they were going, they would be renting. Renting the cottages. And and when they want, and they're utilizing the space in the lodge. Which is part of the so, which is the social organization. We have approval for. We're seeking on the same property. The accessory use of this portion of the the storage building.
I. I guess if people are coming into that facility that you want to add. But they're paying out here for the use of this facility. Doesn't that make that for profit?
They're they're paying for work and stay in the homes, that's what they're doing. With with that, they get access. To. The lodge, the social organization. That. That's the social organization, the the lodge property, okay? And. We're wanting, we're requesting accessory use of. A space in a separate building. That that we can utilize for them when they come in as a welcome center.
So where then does the five oh one three C come in? So then we have this building. That's supposed to be not-for-profit. Under this five oh one three C, then how does that fit into the organization of renting the houses? For profit and then this is not for profit? Cause they're church groups or?
Uh, some of them, yeah.
But they're still paying to stay at the house and then they then use this. But.
We we were permitted, we were permitted to have.
Yeah.
To utilize the lodge, when we created the social organization.
Right.
Which made it. Then the ordinance for us to utilize that space. As a not-for-profit space. Groups are coming in, yeah, they're renting the houses or allowing them then to utilize the the lodge facility. As part of their. What what company?
That helping? So when you do, I don't, let's say the. The taxes on the, yeah, so then how like? What other company is a five oh one three C as an example, is Goodwill a five oh one three C? I don't think they're for profit. So you have a. So do you then not pay taxes or all the money you make goes back into? The business, like, I think that's kind of what they're. Cause you're making a profit on the house, but how are you not making a profit?
But we're.
With the five oh one three C.
We're taking in money for the house, uh, we're not turning a profit. Okay.
Because you're a five oh one three C.
No. So the parcels that the houses are on are are under the LLC.
But it's also a five oh one three C.
No.
No.
It's only this parcel.
Only this parcel, okay.
Requested, and we've gotten approval on to utilize.
But you have the same name, so it's a, it's a different name?
Journey to the well. So the parcels that the homes are on, Journey to the Well LLC.
Okay.
And and so is the lodge parcel, we we simply created the social organization. Uh, that that represents. The people coming in that are utilizing the lodge. At this point. The the uh social organization doesn't own any of the land. Okay, and and but we're we're considering putting it into the foundation.
Which again, that was already, that use was already proved, so the special uses. I don't want to necessarily say to expand, but to have. A welcome area not attached or the or use the lodge as the welcome area. I guess I don't know why they can't just come to the lodge because no one's in it.
This is, this is only for people that show up, it's like in uh. Meet and greet when they get there, right? It's not not going to be used for weddings, not going to be used for. Deer hunting lodge, it's not going to be, just come in, get orientated and find out where you're going and.
Yes. So it's it's a single room, open space, we got a storage room and we want to have a bathroom. So the people, you know, driving the distance coming in, utilize the restroom. Don't get a welcome packet, they'll find out what uh home they're going to stay in, what cabin they're going to stay in. They'll get some direction on activities or, you know, if their group is planning for. So it's it's a place to gather everybody when they first get there. We have currently uh tried to utilize the lodge, but the the challenge we have there is that. The lodge is pretty much a big open area. And where the main parking is, is really closer to this welcome center area. Um, so in in the big. The big main area, you know, it's it's not really conducive to a welcome center because we got a kitchen, we have a bar, there's. Fireplans and couches. The side room where groups often meet. You know, if they're wanting to have their meeting there right away, then we don't want that, people welcome the center and the meeting room. You know, it's just a, it's a separate place.
So basically what you're saying, this is a, a space for orientation, when people come. Tell them, uh, the activities, what's going on, where the houses are, is for implementing purposes of.
Basically a check-in station, correct? Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's already in law use, there are, it's already in law use, so this is like an active space. But they're, but they wanted in a building that already has another special use.
Do you still call that accessory to the, uh, lodge?
I, I would, yes. I would not call it accessory to the boat storage though. I, I'm not, that's the part I'm not too sure about, having two, cause it's a special use. What he's asking is a special use under the ordinance. So now we would have two special uses in the same building. Didn't he say? I'm not sure of that, that. So if there's an opportunity to remove the other special use. And then use this, then we basically have one property with the same special use, and they just start utilizing two spaces. It would be better than having two special users on one building, and then. I mean, there's already two special uses on the property, because there's two storage buildings that have. The seasonal storage, but.
Makes it less confusing.
I think it might make it more clean on this one property to have one special use. That's. I mean, it would still.
And you don't, you don't run out the warehouse for storage of boats and that to. Other people? I mean, you don't advertise that, uh, running out the store, uh. What do you call it, the?
The boat storage.
Warehouse or the.
So a year ago, a year ago, we applied for the special use. For seasonal storage.
Yep.
In this, basically a bolt line.
Okay.
We were granted that approval. Now, in that same building. Which is also in the same parcel as the lodge. We're seeking to have a accessory use of a portion of that building. As a welcome center.
Okay, and, and my question was, did you ever rent out, uh, those stalls to the public or anyone else?
Yes, we, we, we stored one boat there.
So seasonal storage is for profit, that's not part of the nonprofit. So if we were to move in there, then that use. Would have to, the special use for that would have to go away, in my opinion. And he seems to be fine with that. So then, this property would then be all. The nonprofit. Office, or whatever you wanna call it, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to have an office. For the.
Or bathroom.
Or an extra area, so.
Only convenient.
Yeah.
So you'd recommend approval of this? With a modification?
With the. Yes. Because they were already built for use for it.
You understand our confusion?
I think, yes, I think sometimes the ordinances are.
Yeah. Yeah. I, um.
Cause I'm still confused about the blend between the, the houses. And the.
The, the houses are like a single family dwelling, and throughout our township, we allow them to be rented out at this point in time.
Yeah.
There may, that may change at some point, but not now. That has nothing to do with this at this point. Um, so those, and I understand that those are, um. Are, um. For profit and they're allowed. Oh, I think the deer hunting is allowed, I mean, because it's out on the farm and the DNR controls licensing and that. Oh. You don't serve meals, do you?
Uh, yes, we serve some meals.
Is that part of the lodge and people come to the lodge to get their, their meals? Is that like a bed and breakfast then?
Not really called a bed and breakfast.
Because they're not staying at the lodge, or at, they'll say. There's a fine line there, right? Are you, you're right on the fine line?
Well, what fine line are you?
Well, I, I, I'm just a bed and breakfast, if you're categorized as that, it's different than a rental. I, I don't have a problem with a rental.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just curious how you do, how, how you define those stuff. That, nothing else. You got any other questions?
So the, the people that stay in the houses, this is like an all-inclusive? Like an all-inclusive resort?
So when they, they rent the houses and they get access to the lodge, they get access to a lakefront property. Um, the trails, yes.
Okay.
This is kind of like a retreat center, basically? Yes. Okay, that's exactly what we're building, or that's what we, not building, but. Programming, yeah.
Yeah.
So they go there specifically to use this area to have their classes or their worship at a time, or. You know, then they stay, and then during the day or whenever, they come to this. Meeting area to then have their meetings or, you know. Whatever activities that they're doing. And then the building already had the kitchen in it, and it was already. Previously a commercial use. I hope that makes it there.
So a, a special use permit is consistent with the policies and the usage proposed for that area of the township. Uh, we have, already have a special use permit, uh. Which, at, which pine went with the master plan. Uh, all of the uses allowed under pro-special use permit would be compatible. With other zones and uses surrounding the area, he owns all the property around it, so he's not interfering with anyone. Uh, any public services or facilities would be significantly adversely impacted by the development or use allowed under the request of special use. Uh, I don't see anything that would interfere with it. Oh. Your parking gonna be adequate? It's probably not noisy back there, I never hear anyone complaining.
No, in fact, people come talk about how peaceful it is.
There. I guess it's time to make a recommendation.
You can go through your special agent criteria.
What's that?
Your special agent criteria. And your zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
Special agent. Okay. In your package.
Is there something we missed?
There's something in there we gotta cover?
Yes.
But I missed that.
They're different than the three questions that you just read, but in fact it. The zoning, the zoning ordinance or special land use?
Right, the criteria part? Character operations.
What did we miss?
We did without Tasha.
It's in the last page of the packet before my report. Go back to finding criteria.
The last page of what?
The packet. Okay, down the packet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, the building right now, moving my way to the back. Wasn't there. Yes, I don't have that. So that, in your package?
It's in the, yes. It's on the, it's on the other packet.
Hey, the relationship adjacent to land and other buildings? They own all the adjacent land.
Yeah, it's already up.
Pardon?
It's a building, it's already there.
Yeah, but, yeah. Operations.
Discussion too.
The operation.
It was a building, it's already there, it's been.
The building's already there, so it's not changing anything in the district. It's the same operation that they're using for the main lodge. Just gonna have additional meet and greet. The location of the site, respect to existing and future roads. It's got parking, it's got, uh, the future roads for the same roads that he's using currently. Uh, and highways providing access to the site should be harmony with the ordinary development, he's way off the road and. Is in harmony with original stuff. District is the same, not changing, characterization of operation. It's, uh. Part of the nonprofit. Uh, object of the nearby properties by reason of noise. Traffic, safety, congestion, vibration, dust, fumes, smoke, or flashing lights in operation. We have none of that as a problem. Commercial uses of the Nadine property, we talked about noise, lighting, outside storage. Talked about that. Possible blight of future maintenance, uh. That's not an issue, public safety is not an issue. Traffic patterns, both onsite and adjacent roadways, not a problem. I imagine you got good drainage with the lake there. And screening the beltline. Did I cover everything? Yep. So now. Place. This is the point we have to make a recommendation to the township board to approve, right? Those are the board?
Those are the board, correct.
Approved with corrections, uh. We, we got approved with conditions, right?
You can approve with conditions, Jeff.
We made some conditions about the. Not using the, uh, stores. The barn, right?
So removing the special land use proceeds from the storage in that building.
Correct.
Yes.
You agreeable with that, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was it, right?
I think that was the one, yes.
Just the one item? So we're doing approval with, uh. Oh. Modification. Correction, I guess is the best way to say it.
Not, I'm not 100% sure there's another thing we got to do to dissolve the special use, but as part of the condition. We would just have to follow whatever steps. We would take to them dissolve that. I'm not sure what that is, but.
Neither am I. It, it seems like I, when we were applying for it, I thought maybe the. Now, now, I don't know if this is a practice or not, but I thought I read, and I could be wrong. That someone would come out and inspect it annually and give us approval or not, so. I don't know, you might, you might check the writing.
Well, the, the approval would have to be amended, because it was for two buildings, and now it'll be just for one, so we'll have to amend. I'm not sure of that process, but there'll be an amendment to that special use, so you can still use the other building if you want, just not this one. But that's, that's for another day.
Nope. So I'm still confused about the blend between the. The houses and the, the lodge and how it's. If there's a, if there's a legal problem there.
Yeah, that was already approved.
Yeah.
So he already has that special use.
So I just. I'm reading in this. Seasonal storage in existing marms, it's page fifty-three of the ordinance. And. Um, actually fifty, fifty-four is where it states, and it says. Uh, once granted for a particular building, there shall be no requirement to renew a special use approval. For this use unless the commercial use ceases for more than two consecutive years. So, yeah, I mean. I mean, I don't think that's the way to deal with this, that we simply won't use it, and then that special use expires. After two years.
Latasha, what, what do you think? Do you think this is? Am I just being unnecessarily confused about this?
Went through initial special land use, where all of that should have been resolved if there were questions at that time, but now it's already been granted by the planning commission and the board. So the special use is already approved, and this is an accessory use to that already approved use. Um, yeah, so this particular special land use isn't approving again the. The civic organization, it's just an accessory use to that already approved use.
We're, if we have a motion to approve with the conditions to change the warehouse special use. And correct the original special use for changes to the warehouse use. Did I cover everything?
Yes.
I make that motion?
Okay.
Second it.
Let's second it. Okay, second by train. Um, a roll call vote, Ken?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Dave, yes.
Scott, sorry about all that.
Yes. I guess you have a hard job.
Really not, we're not gonna, we're not diving into this.
Patients, you know.
Yeah.
Right, you know.
Yeah.
So, well, this is the. The next board agenda, or do you want it on the one after that?
What's that? But it'll be too pretty soon to get it next week, let's, let's, uh.
Okay.
Well, we were.
How, how soon do you need to go to work?
Um.
Yesterday?
Yesterday. Tasha, when you and I first talked, you, you mentioned the fifteen would be the, the board meeting that we.
Well, I'm asking, he says the board agenda, so I'm asking him.
Okay.
They already have it.
Can, can you get us something right on?
I don't know why not, yes.
We'll, we'll do it next week?
Okay.
And then next week?
Yes.
I think.
But yeah.
Okay, so that's the end of the Journey to the Well.
Yep.
Okay, uh.
So then we go to the county board, and then the township board has the.
Scott, sometime I like to just sit down with you and talk about this, because I'm, I'm interested how. You could educate.
Into working.
Just see. Sometime you're out and about. We need to get the zoning administrator report, any, uh. Oh, your meeting.
Back to regular business.
Yes.
In the packet.
In the packet, okay. Anything that.
I have not heard anything about, uh, PUD. I know.
The who?
The PUD.
Oh.
I haven't heard, I don't know if they're working on their. Uh, their next plan, or I don't.
Sunset Lake. Was that the PUD on Sunset Lake?
I think they were working out the funneling. Ordinance.
Okay.
That kind of brought some additional stuff to their thoughts, so.
Okay. But you're heading down only for. Frontals, right?
Well, you wanted more than that, you know. I don't know, you had all of those, how do you restrict those people from using that, but I don't know if they're kind of worked that out.
So when somebody calls you about Kent and RV regulations on vacant land. What do you tell them?
What the ordinance says?
That it's not allowed?
I read that. I read the ordinance, yeah, well, it is allowed, with a permit in certain days.
Yeah.
Whatever the new ordinance says, four eleven or whatever it gets.
Okay, um. I don't have any questions. I guess there's been no ZBAs.
No ZBA, correct.
Township board member report, that would be you, Ken?
There is no report. Public comments?
Public comments, anybody else for public comments?
Just, um, again, because. Because I didn't feel like I had time to process the thoughts, I spent hours trying to figure out what needed to be said. Um, and one of the things in hindsight that should have been said is that. I would like to see this overly district expand. I would like to see this overlay district expanded. I won't say drastically, but we own property that's all contiguous with the proposed overlay district that would more than double the size of that. And that is all under contract with the board. And to save future, I know, that might have been the only path on the table. That being said, the state is the option that most of these people are gonna be taking, especially considering that, uh, these contiguous acres stretch into other townships. And it's just a mess to try to get three different permits for one project. Uh, and then the other thing I'd like to say is that I can't help but notice that all the concerns about Ken being on this body. I think that been validated tonight. The chairperson and the vice chair not in this meeting.
I'm a newbie, I just got here.
I am not, but this is not my environment, so. There we go. Any other comments?
Well, I don't know if you decided you might be ready.
So that's it. You can hold on more close to meeting it.
I, I.
I, I really know, for the F G Q. They, but they can't tell. Same for any. Yeah, we're pretty sure, no, I'm writing on two thirteen, right across. So, you know. So.
But is there?
Yes, if you're ready, yes. So probably that's why. No. Okay. Yeah, no, okay, no, well, so basically, so here is, okay, here's the family farm, here's the pen, here's the. And that here is.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So where is that?
Okay, so now.
Right here, there's a break here. Okay, right there. Right here?
This would be the forward sound. They'll end up putting the transfer.
Okay, wait a minute, we, we switch our. Okay, so here's the far lines, here's two. Switch station.
This would be so.
Yeah.
Exactly. Then get to the point where, what do I put there now? Okay, just call where.
Okay, then I'll get a whole. Yeah, I'll get a whole dream and tell them that's what's going on.
There's gonna be that.
Yeah.
Cause we're not hard to remove that one.
Yeah, 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 okay, cool.
Yeah, over the.
You don't know what the, I don't know what it looks like with the spot. I mean, I think I'm, you're right in terms of. You able to kind of warn me? I just was telling you. What can you do than is like a small. We have to kind of like put all these muzzle pieces together, so.
I, I was trying to like, it was already.
Consider like this piece of the muzzle. I'm not totally opposed to, uh, the idea of the server and everything, it's just.
Or, yeah.
I'm opposed to it being that close to me.
There's any way to.
More on the environmental effects to.
But again, this special.
The, uh, potential for R five.
So they can't take your other one away unless they find some evidence.
They cannot interfere that will be detrimental to amateur aid operation. So.
Be careful.
I was telling, hiding it to your neighbor? Yeah, okay. I was telling her. Personally frustrating thing about.
I'd tell you what to do, but.
It is. I, I've worked, I've worked with four different developing companies.
Projections.
Uh-huh. And, um, they've told me, they, they themselves, my lawyers told me this too, but they themselves have said, whatever you want, ask for it.
Okay.
And we'll try to figure out what we can do.
Awesome.
Yes. But your concerns.
Probably something.
Your concerns are vast.
Yeah.
I want to be the neighbor.
Yes.
I don't want that. So, yeah, so, um, definitely, I, I want them to test the equipment. If this goes through, I, you know, I want them to test the equipment, I know. If I have to do a formal request or whatever, oh, I might have to figure out how to do that. Because then, full, and then they keep me on the. In some areas, um, H F is totally unusable here. For type regions, which allows you. H F is what allows me to talk to somebody in California or something, somewhere down the ocean, Michigan, or over in Europe or wherever. They need to have a chat. That's where the repeated address for, uh, electric around the radio. Um, I don't know how much this is gonna affect them in that far away. But with, if it's gonna be, I don't know. I don't know if the battery are going to affect them here.
The township.
Okay. We're on state, oh, okay.
No, I understand why you're getting.
Go ahead.
Exactly right.
I think, um.
What we're, we're trying to do is limit where it's gonna go. And I, I respect it. I'm glad you're there. The problem is, is a lot of people have the ninja. You're better.
And everybody has digital.
I, like I said. I'm not. I'm not opposed, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to it. As long as it doesn't interfere.
These are.
With, um, you know, like I said, when you, you know. With that ice storm, people were on the, people had no phone, no internet, no communication per day.
They don't business.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, I don't know, I know there's other radio operators that I saw, but I don't. But many of them, on my road or my neighborhood, I think I'm. That's a question they could answer. And they'd be happy to answer.
Oh, it's weird, probably where.
I mean, it's where. I can, I can neither get a message to somebody or Troy, or I can. I'm gonna ask the question. And all these are banned because I'm. But then there's a country that's where, yeah, it's very. And then, um, but you know, you look at. Where it's like. It's time to deny.
Lucy, to shut off, I don't have anything on shutting off.
Okay.
Ordinance is, call the clerk.
Uh, just, just.
There's two ordinances that they're gonna be.
Are they on the website? Everything, you know. She can hear his mailbox. Okay, good.
Had one ordinance that we already went through.
No, yeah.
A year ago, and now this is the second one, and then they're gonna decide which one they're gonna.
They, yeah.
So you wanna actually see the actual text.
Okay.
Then you can ask the clerk.
Believe. Yeah. But anyways, like you say, there's, I got this one, um, um. Program. For the regulator. Because they. Solar. Solar panel. Great.